John, your feed is. John, your feed is not working.
Oh.
John, your, your internet feed, you're frozen. Um, you look very good, but you're frozen.
I don't even see him.
And we can't even hear you.
Daphne?
It's one of those times.
This is interesting. We haven't never had it.
Do I get to do my, uh, take over again?
You're Alexander Haig.
I'm in charge.
Alright.
Al Tamkin.
Okay, I'm back. Uh, I think it's, it's time to begin. Good evening.
Oh, no. John, you're coming in and out again. Uh-oh, and it's worse than Darth Vader this time.
Only George Glenda can hear you now.
The problem is, he doesn't know that.
John?
He can't, he can't hear you.
How about if you signal, signal? How about you go like this?
Yes.
That's good.
I have heard I'm frozen.
Yes. Yes, you are frozen.
We can do a hand too. I can send him a message.
No, he got it. I think he got it, that he was frozen.
Three years into technology, we're failing big time tonight.
Oh, he is, you know, he's so good at this. Like, I don't know how he does it where it, you know.
Nick, I'm surprised you don't have a laptop at your house, wherever you are.
Okay, well, I keep freezing.
You're good now.
But I don't know, yeah, if everyone can hear me. So, um, we are being recorded and we're all also being broadcast on the news. Um, just to deal with the technicality, for some reason, we can't continue this evening because of an internet problem. Everything is continued until next month's hearing. So, there we did re-advertise, but hopefully we'll get through the three matters we have tonight. Uh, the first thing we need to do, however, is to deal with the minutes of the meeting from last month. Someone want to move to approve the minutes?
I'd make a motion and, uh, just briefly while I have you, what do you want to do when you freeze again? Cause you're freezing. Uh, it's very hard to hear your voice. Do you want to go on your cellphone? Do you want to drop the video?
The point has been clear.
Right now, the picture's for.
Right now, I think I'm okay. If, if I have a problem, I will go on my phone and come back, but, you know.
Okay, I'll make a motion.
You, 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 you should, you should continue if I don't get back quickly.
Okay, uh, make a motion to approve the minutes of the, uh, September, uh, meeting.
Second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, so the, the first matter for tonight is one, four, Broad Meadow.
This is gonna take a while.
Uh-oh.
I anticipated that, Daphne.
And he did say that if he wasn't coming clear that he was gonna.
Al Tamkin.
It's Al Haig, it's not Tamkin, it's Al Haig.
Al Tamkin.
Two, one, with a tax three cousins.
John, we can't hear a thing you're saying.
Using hand signals.
You want to hop on the phone?
Jonathan, do you want to reread the, you want to reread the?
Yes, I will.
Item, please?
And maybe John wants to, uh, hop onto, uh, the phone. So, this is, uh, case number one. Uh, 164 Broad Meadow Road, Arthur and Valentina Elzon, the owners have applied for special permit under section 6.12, uh, to allow one additional garage on the lot. And it's associated with the demolition reconstruction of a new single-family home and attached three-car garage at 164 Broad Meadow Road and the Single Residence B District. Uh, who is here for the applicant?
Hi, it's, uh, it's us, Valentina Elzon and my husband, Arthur Elzon.
Oh, sorry to, uh, take that much time getting there. So, why don't you tell us what you're looking to do and what your plans are?
Sure, absolutely. So, I just wanted to kind of begin by telling you a little bit about ourselves. We've been, uh, Needham residents since 2012. We absolutely love this town and we love this community. Um, we have three kids who have gone through Broad Meadow or going to be. Um, our oldest daughter, Isla, just graduated, um, from fifth grade at Broad Meadow and our youngest, Alma, just started kindergarten at Broad Meadow. Um, we are, uh, very lucky that we have, uh, found this lot, um, so near the school. Um, it's an oversized lot and it's going to allow us to have a really big yard for our kids to play in. Um, we're also really excited, um, for them to be able to walk to school without crossing, um, any major streets, um, and without any adult supervision. Um, and we're even thinking about maybe building a zip line for them to zip them right into school. Isn't it running late?
They'll be on the next application.
That, um, our, our family situation is such that, um, you know, our, um, we're lucky to have my mother-in-law, um, helping us out with the kids. Um, she comes over frequently and with this new, um, house that we're building out, we're, we're building it in such a way that we can accommodate her moving in with us. Um, there is a first-floor bedroom, um, and also we are seeking this application for the third gar- garage bay so that she could park her car there once she's ready to move in with us. Um, and even before then, she stays with us fairly frequently, um, so having a place for her to park to get out of the snow in the winter and just to have one more car, um, off the, the street, um, during pickup and drop-off times on the Broad Meadow School. Um, I think that'll also help a little bit. Um, we've been, um, holding off construction for, for a few months. Um, we wanted to make sure that we appear before, um, this board to get the input, um, from the board and we also wanted to make sure that we were taking all of our neighbors', uh, concerns into consideration. Um, we've been kind of walking up and down the street, knocking on doors, um, getting to know our neighbors, talking to them about we're go- what we're going to be building, um, expressing to them, um, you know, what our plans are and our landscape ideas. Um, and we believe we got, um, everyone's approval, um, or at least no, no one who's, uh, hopefully going to object to this plan. Um, we have a few letters of support. Um, I know Daphne, some came in a little bit late, so we're happy to share those on the screen. Um, if you would like. Um, but yeah, we're here. Um, we welcome any other input, um, from the board, any questions, and, um, thank you for your time and consideration.
John, are you back with us?
I, I hope so.
Okay.
The, the planning board had no comment, the building commissioner had no objection. Um, likewise, fire. Um, Public Works, although the Public Works noted that, um, th- there will be a requirement when they apply for building permits to comply with the storm drain requirements. And we did receive, uh, letters of support from four of your neighbors. Anyone on the board have a question?
No, I just wanted to, I just wanted to add that the police had no comment as well.
Okay, thank you.
So, the, uh, if I can just thank you, uh, for, for that, those thoughtful remarks. I'm looking at a site plan. Why don't you just walk us through, Ray John, it's, it's, it's a, a third garage. Uh, it looks like it's, just tell us a little bit about it, about the lighting, that the lighting is not reflecting on the neighbor's property, um, that it appears to be a uh, nice, single-family home conforming nicely, but just can you just walk us through the quickly through the, uh, wh- what the outside might look like?
I'll, I'll turn it over to you. My husband is, uh, the builder actually on this home, uh, on our home. Uh, he's, he's a builder mostly in Newton, um, but he builds our house, uh, is going to be building our house in Needham, so I'll turn it over to him to answer those, uh, questions.
Yeah, so, as, as much as I try to refuse this client.
Are you comfortable with that builder?
I, I'm not comfortable with this client, but I don't think I'm much. Um, so, uh, her demands were, uh, were, were serious, and one of those demands was actually soffit lights, uh, over the garage, because she says the ones that we put up, uh, on our current house, well, they don't light up anything. Uh, which is good, but at the same time, they, they also, you know, they, they don't do anything for us. So, we're gonna have, uh, downlights, uh, in our soffit. So, there's gonna be, uh, you know, an 18-inch soffit over the, the garage and there will be lights pointing down, so nothing protruding to the neighbors or anyone else's, uh, uh, yards or, or space. Uh, in fact, you know, one of the things that we, we considered and, um, you know, we, we do have a unique lot, uh, it's very large for Broad Meadow. Um, we, as part of the site plan, we, we decided to turn the garage so that it's L-shaped. We have kind of a courtyard that doesn't have the garage face the street, which I know in Newton, um, is not, uh, it's actually very favorable. People don't want to see the garage as you're driving in the street. And so, we did the same thing, um, here, uh, and it actually, it, it ended up, uh, working kind of, kind of nicely. Um, you know, I'll give my, uh, my aging mom the ability to turn around without knocking over any of Valentina's plants and uh, hopefully, uh, any of the kids that she does come to, to help out. Um, we, we also, uh, Valentina and I worked on a few, um, ideas for, like, the landscaping, the green space, and, and we have, um, I don't want to say a plan, but we kind of have an idea that we can share with you guys of what it's gonna look like and where we want to plant some, um, just some, some trees or some, uh, some shrubs that will, uh, that we've also shared with the neighbors that they've also appreciated and liked. Um, you know, our Brevite's, uh, Green Giants, and we can share those as well, if we can share that on the screen.
Yeah.
Yeah, we, we, we don't, un- unless there's a question, we don't need to do that.
Okay.
Thank you for, for giving a quick, uh, account as to what the house will look like and how you focused on the downward lighting.
So, I'm looking at the rendering, uh, that you submitted with your application, and I think you're just describing sort of the, uh, courtyard. It's, it's that part of the house that's a shed roof, uh, is that one of the bays?
That, that is, that is one of the bays, exactly. And again, we, we did that, um, yeah, not, not because we, you know, we we needed the space above the garage or didn't need the space above the garage. We, we thought about the neighbors and, you know, how that, that third bay, um, being a shed roof would actually not obstruct, uh, you know, additional uh, view from the neighbor. So, again, we put, we, we've owned this home since June. We haven't, uh, we just tore it down a few weeks ago, so we haven't really done anything, because we wanted to take everyone and everything into consideration.
So, I often say, and I've said it probably for about the last year, that when an applicant comes in looking for the request for a third bay, uh, prior to building the home, uh, it's always appreciated, because you can take a look at the whole context of where we are and and what the neighbors, and you have support from your neighbors, which is always a positive thing. Um, and besides that, I won't comment to whether we should actually require a special permit for a third car garage anymore. Although I just commented. Um, no further comments, Mr. Chair.
Any other questions from the board?
All said, thanks.
Any que- anybody from the public wanting to be heard on this, Daphne?
We have one hand raised. I will forward. Uh, I will promote them as a panelist. It's a Graham. Last name Graham.
I said one que- I, I just had one question. There's, uh, I don't want to get into all the landscaping, but there's a big tree there. A big, uh, copper beech. Is that gonna stay?
I have your name, please, and your address.
Sure, it's Graham Wells. Uh, 110 Bird Street.
Graham, great, great question, because part of the consideration in actually flipping the house, we originally had the garage on the right, and we flipped it to the left, because the bee tree is something not only my wife, but my kids will not let me touch, and I wouldn't touch it as well. It's one of the most beautiful trees on that entire street. Um, so we, we did flip the garage so that we could salvage the tree and make sure that it's there.
That's my question. Great, thank you very much.
Of course.
Anyone else that may ask you to be heard?
There are no other hands raised. Oh, it looks like John's frozen again. Oh, nope, young froze, John. There are no other hands raised.
Um, John's just being quiet. Uh, someone, someone want to make a motion? Someone want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll do this one. Um, and hello, Graham, nice to see you. It's been a long time. Uh, a motion to approve the application for a special permit for a third car garage for the, uh, uh, in the construction of a new home, uh, at, uh, 164 Broad Meadow Road, subject only to the requirements of the bylaw that all your lighting not be visible and, and come off, uh, off this property. And that's a requirement of the bylaw for the third car garage. And of course, uh, for your building permit, you're gonna have to comply with the, uh, town stormwater, uh, requirements.
Second.
A second that motion?
All in favor?
Aye. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Nice job, nice presentation. Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Alright, case number two, 84 Fair Oaks Park. Roger Inspire III and Quimby Wise Squire owners apply to the Board of Appeals for a special permit under sections 1.4.3, 3.1.5, 4.2.1, and any other applicable sections of the bylaw to demolish an existing garage and to construct a new two-story detached garage with an ADU on the second floor. An open breezeway connecting the principal unit and the ADU shall also be constructed. Properties located 84 Fair Oaks in the Single Residence B District. On this, who do we have?
So, um, we're Studio Troika, we're the architects that are representing Roger and Quimby. Uh, my name is Michael Samra. I'm one of the principals at Studio Troika, and with me, I have John Peterson.
I'm one of the project managers on the job, and then with us is Jill Hopkins.
And we'll go ahead and, um, and we'll go ahead and per- I think we should present.
Yes, you should describe what you want, what you want to do.
Great, um, I'm just gonna let John bring it up and I'll, I'll start the presentation and then I'll let him continue through. Good, you're in. Okay, um, so, we've been working with Roger and Quimby for a number of years. We started working with Roger on one of his commercial projects, and then we actually did an addition to the rear of the house at 84 Fair Oaks, uh, several years ago to redo the kitchen, dining room and, and living room. And, um, because of some changes in their family, they require, or they asked us if they could build an E- an ADU um, for one of the family members. So, um, one of the things that we found on the site, if you can go to the site plan, John, um. So, on the existing site as it is today, right now, there's an existing garage that falls within the side yard and rear setback. Um, so it's a non-compliant garage. And what our pro- what our proposal was, because we can't actually attach directly to the house without disturbing the house itself and, and, you know, getting rid of the yard, we actually, the next slide is, we proposed doing a garage that creates an interior courtyard between the house and the garage right there, and bringing the garage into compliance, and instead of it facing the road now, it actually, the face of the garage is actually perpendicular to the road as we go through there. But the idea was to create a little courtyard of a yard for them, for their family, so that the unit was, um, as cohesive as possible, and using that breezeway piece to connect the garage and the house.
Can you just tell us a little about the breezeway? You said it's part of the garage?
The gr- the, the breezeway is to connect the garage and the ADU to the existing house at two levels. At the first floor level, at the ground level, it connects the garage to the, the main part of the house. And then, on the second floor, it connects Roger's office to the ADU on the second floor, so you can, you can access from both levels. One's covered and one's uncovered. And we can go through that a little bit more as, as we look at the, at the drawings that we presented here.
Do you want me to take over? Okay, so here, we're looking at the existing dwelling unit, which, where we did work was this kitchen here and a small bump out and then work up on the second floor. So, here's a good shot at what this new courtyard is going to be, and the squires are really good friends with their adjacent neighbors. And our landscape architect on board is actually going to help tie the two yards together with hardscaping and some other form of plantings, to be determined, but it won't feel as disconnected. Um, but, so we have our interior courtyard and then our garage that fits the 600 square foot requirement and our interior stair that goes up to the second floor. If I go to the next, this is the blow-up of that side floor plan. So, keeping the garage to that requirement, um, as stated in the bylaws with our stair. Um, and keeping going forward up is the overall blow-up of the second floor and how it attaches. So, this is Roger's office that we helped develop back in 2016. And what we're going to do is pop another door out here, and then we have this decking walkway all the way across that connects his office directly to the ADU on the other side of the courtyard. And so, this is all covered by railings which match character of the existing house, which we can show renderings of, um, as we get further down the presentation. And a quick blow-up of the living unit. So, we have our interior stair, mudroom, bathroom, and basically a studio apartment. So, this is where, right here, we have a double slider door that goes out into this breezeway, as I said, connects back to Roger's office. And all these windows play off of the character of the existing house, and everything looks down upon the courtyard, trying to connect one space to the other, to the next. And then, as we go into elevations, one of the things we really want to do is make sure that this secondary structure is complementary to the existing house. So, we're taking characters from the existing house and applying it here, but also simplifying it, so it's not to compete with its hierarchical structure. So, the primary unit has a lot of ornate trim, has a lot of really beautiful detailing, and we're taking nods all of those pieces and applying it here. So, instead of the shake siding that's there, what we're proposing is a nice, clean nickel-gap siding of a rough of the same exposure. So, it kind of helps subdue the, the, the sightlines a bit. We're planning on using clean, um, casement-style windows with a real clean trim around the outsides uh, to complement the sizing of the windows on the primary unit, but not to compete with the existing backband trim and historic sills and the bi-piece trim that does exist. And we're also taking parts from the front porch of the, the corbling and the, and the brackets that are on that portico on the front of the house, and applying it to an overhang uh, that we're doing on the driveway side of the, uh, garage. And if we turn the corner, this is a view looking at the ADU from the courtyard. So, these are all the units, uh, the window units we're proposing. Uh, so we have two in the garage to bring some natural light in here. We have a window up in the stairwell for natural light there, one above the shower and two in the living area. And one thing that was important to the squires was that they are big football fans and they foresee this courtyard being a really fun family space, so they want to do some kind of TV or projector or some kind of outdoor gathering space kind of as an outdoor living room, uh, because their kitchen and their living room does back straight to this. So, they open up all their doors, they've essentially doubled their, their living room, which is really, really nice. As we keep trucking along the backside of the elevation, so here's the door that goes into the upper stair, uh, covered interior storage for the yard, so trash cans, canoes, storage, toys, whatever can live underneath of the stair, and it's all covered. And then, we have another window up on that second floor for that stairwell again to bring in some more natural light and and then on the backside, we're trying to keep this as plain as possible. So, A, we're close to the setback lines, we're not on it, we're close. So, we want to make sure that this is completely fire-protected, the eaves are covered, we're completely inbound of all of our setbacks, but we're also not trying to compete with the neighbors or have any type of privacy issues. And again, this will all be planted as we get further along with our landscape architect, so this will all have plantings that won't just be, uh, bare. And a couple renderings that we have, so this is what it would look like from the driveway. So, we have our covered portico here. The, uh, mudroom door of the existing house is right back here. So, you can see as they pull up and they pull into the garage, this is one single connection from interior to exterior. And what ties it all together is this colonnade with, um, a sculpted railing that matches the character of the railings on the existing house above their I guess we'll call it a great room. It's, it's kind of like their library dining room area. It's, it's really nice. And in our conversations with Daphne and Dave, we've decided that it makes a lot of sense to have uh, planters and trellis and greenery that kind of help shroud the courtyard from the rest of the yard and the driveway, and kind of really help tie these two pieces together, so it doesn't quite feel as disconnected. And this is a view from that backside. So, this is their main, uh, dining living room. As I was saying, they have these great French doors that will open up into the space almost doubling, if not more, their active living space. And all the sightlines go in and out and up and down, so this all feels connected. And this is one kind of closer to the street. And if requested, we actually have our full model open too, so we could walk you through the exterior, but we'll let you guys make the call if you'd like to see that or not. And that's where we're at for our presentation, so thank you.
Alright, thank you. So, the, the planning board is, um, objecting to this on the basis that the ADU is not in the primary residential structure. It's located in a second detached structure. The building inspector, um, is okay with what has been proposed. And I think that's the main issue we're gonna have to deal with tonight. Um, the Public Works notes that you need to comply with stormwater approval. Police have no problem. Health Department points out, you need a demolition permit. And you have to pay attention to pest control uh, during the construction. So, I think, I think the, uh, first issue that we ought to address is the objection of the planning board. And, um, the problem is, is that 3.15.3 uh, says that an ADU will be located in, in a single-family detached dwelling and not in an accessory building. Um, a- as I see this issue, a number of times, we've dealt with breezeways attaching garages. And we've taken the position that that makes it part of the house. Um, um, that's an issue in the appeal we have with the sopers, and I can remember several other times that we've concluded when the accessory building is attached, it all becomes one house. But, um, wh- why don't we discuss that issue first?
Could you please turn off your screen share?
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
So, so, so why don't we discuss that issue? How do the other board members see it?
Well, I, I, I'm glad you asked it, and I think it's an interesting point. I, I think the, the, uh, the gentleman appears to be an architect, did a great job, and the renders are great. I think it feels, uh, it's by design to be connected, and it does feel connected. So, I, I'm, I feel good about this proposal.
John, I, I, I don't recall specifically the other situations you're referring to. Uh, I, I I really agree with the planning board. Uh, which, which I know is an odd thing to say. Uh, I, I, I read 315 point two, I guess, in, in, in three particular provisions in 315-3, is, is I think clearly contemplating it being not just, not attached by a breezeway, but, but really physically integrated into the main, uh, portion of the residence. I mean, in, including the reference to the, uh, interior door between the two units, which is obviously doesn't have. Uh, so I, I I, I share their concern. I, I think there is an issue.
Other board members?
Um, it's a beautiful project.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think if the bylaw was a little bit more expansive, uh, we wouldn't have this dilemma. Um, I, I, I do think there's probably a way of doing it. It's probably gonna eat up some of that open space uh, to accommodate what the applicant, uh, is looking for. It, but it's a beautiful, beautiful job. Um, but it looks like an accessory structure connected by a breezeway. And I don't, again, I, I, I'm willing to look at those other cases where we treat it as a breezeway as one, one structure. I, I'm not so sure. I, I, I concur with that. Um, they've done a, a really superb job trying to make it one structure. Um, but I think there may be less attractive options for them to get the, uh, accessory unit in. Less attractive options for them to get the uh accessory unit in. Connected, so uh you know, I I hear what the planning board is saying, um. I'm reading the bylaw. And I think we have to get to the fundamental issue is an accessory structure. Connected by an elaborate breezeway. I I don't believe the walkway underneath does anything. I think it's another way of connecting, but it's not part of the structure. Does that make it one structure? I think we have to think about that. I'm willing to ponder that, I'm willing to look at. Anything that we've done in the past. But right now, I I don't know. It meets the requirements of the bylaw. I wanted to though, because it's very well done.
Well, I I. I can I can think of three cases. Where we've basically have ruled that when something is attached. When an accessory, when a built, when detached building is attached to the house, we consider as part of the house. The most recent one was the sopers up on Mark Lee Road where it's on appeal. If you'll recall, if. If they detached it. The garage could then be five feet from the sideline and moved it away from the house. It could be five feet from the sideline, but because it was attached. We found it was all part of the house and it had to comply with the side setback. Um another case was on Grosvenor Road. Where um somebody was rebuilding part of the property and I know. We treated the garage which was attached. We treat it all as one unit and one which probably. Proceeds all of you, I can remember. Um at the corner of school in Webster Street, the old Red Cross Building. Peter Barnes Brown owned that and uh they they had a handicapped child and wanted to attach. The garage which was only five feet from the sideline to the house. And we had a grant of variance to allow him to do it. Because once it was attached, it had to comply with the side setback. So I. I I can think of at least three cases and there may be others. Where we we've taken the view that once something is attached, then it has to be considered part of the house. I I don't know that that totally answers the question because. There's also an intent here. Um in the way the bylaw was written. I mean, there there's. Also, the issue is it's supposed to not detract from the look as a single family house. And I suppose that's also called into question. By this. But um. It it's tough because it's a beautiful project. And as I said, the building inspectors. Finds because it's attached. That it's compliant with the bylaw.
Uh Mr. Chair, I'd like to bring also uh that the building commissioner felt that the breezeway. There is only one. Connection between the ADU and the main house is through the breezeway, there is it is limited. To that unit, there is no other purpose for the breezeway, and so he felt that that kind of. That would be like a door between them, because that's the that's. The 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 doors that connect the two to the main house, to the accessory dwelling unit.
Mr. Legris, you haven't uh. Wasted opinion, you want to say something about this?
This is a tough one, because I too, like the rest of the board, think this is beautiful, I see. Everything there, uh obviously, I'm the junior guy here, so I don't. Have the history besides the soper matter that you were talking about, Mr. Chair, but you know, it's clear that three fifteen three A starts with. The ADU shall be located in the single family detached dwelling and not in an accessory building. So. I see both sides, if you're telling me the precedent. Overall is that an accessory building attached or an accessory building to be constructed that will be attached. Qualifies as being in, I can see that interpretation as well, but I am torn and I'm glad I won't be voting on this one today.
It's John, and and the ones you're you're talking about. And uh what was the nature of the attachment? I mean, was was it an enclosed structure, was it open like this, was it a pergola, what was it? Do you recall?
Say again.
In in the the cases that you're talking about in the past, what 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 was the nature of of the attachment between the accessory building and the main structure, was it? Was it fully enclosed, was it open like this?
Grosvenor was completely open.
And how long was the?
Recently, was a recent project?
Oh, no, no, the distance, how far apart were the buildings?
I don't recall.
Yeah.
So that's where I was sort of getting at, I don't remember. Uh it's sort of the negative, we found. That you had to do something because they were connected rather than. They're within. Um sort of, I'd like to see. What those decisions look like, maybe take a look at the properties and sort of understand what we've done in the past. Um to and and then the other thing I I'd like to do is take another look. At your presentation and your rendering. Um before we vote or. Don't vote or continue or whatever, just so I can in look at it again.
George Jenta has his hand raised.
Alright, so if I may, I think. Two of the cases that John was referencing were cases that I handled. Um and on, I think on both of them, the distance between the. The detached garage in the house was about ten feet or so. Um the one on the corner of of Webster and. Uh that you can't remember the cross street there, uh that one might have been a little less. But I know there's been that one, the one at Grosvenor, there's another one as well. Where it was generally about a ten foot or an eight foot separation between the two structures. And the issue in those cases was always a matter of setback. And what setback applied in the in the and in those cases, it was determined that because of the. Attachment, because of the breezeway connecting the garage to the main body of the house, it was all treated as one structure for setback purposes. So, you know, those cases, it was always somebody was doing an addition, uh you know, and the and the question was therefore, you know, the 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 houses generally were nonconforming. If you considered it all as one structure, and in one of the cases, it was a matter of connecting. Uh the two the two together and getting relief based on that. But I think part of the question in this one is when the when the ADU requirement was adopted. Was there something different intended, and I have to say, I mean, I've, you know, I've worked with the ADU provision and to me. Um the la- you know, the language could be a little bit more. Clear, I think, um. But. I think if you look at the prior cases, certainly. The garage physically attached by a breezeway makes it part of the house, it's all one structure. Uh and it's that for setback purposes, so I guess the only question is, can you find it? As one structure for one purpose and not one structure for another purpose?
So yes, I think you probably can, thank you, George, for the insight on that. If we could go back to the rendering, I'd like to take a look at that, uh if you want to share and and look, focus in on the breezeway side of that.
Would it would it make sense if we go to the walkthrough and walk you through from the street, um because then we can choose whatever view you want instead of being in a static view?
That's absolutely fine.
Okay, great, um and you know, before we go any further, I I do have to. We work in a lot of different towns in Massachusetts and I have to say how. Fantastic it was that both. Daphne and Dave were available to us and we've we've talked with them throughout this entire process, um. I know we're doing something that's slightly, you know, out of the ordinary. When we're asked to design something for our clients, we have to make sure that not only are we trying to comply with all the zoning and the applicable laws of the town. But also to make sure that we're adding value to the specific lot into this house. Right into the things around there and not to take away from the light and air and breeze that is in their existing kitchen and dining room that we just. Completed like like I said, less than several years ago. Um we really do want this to be connected and it's only because of a family requirement. Where they want to have this connection with. You know, the family member, but allows for some independent living as well. So um we'll walk through this a little bit more and and I think it's important to start from the street like we did. So you can see that you, from the street level, you can't see that it's. You know, even the addition is there. And as you get further down, I'm just going to ask John to turn to the right right here, because here's the existing, uh keep going down further, John. There's the existing door that they use primarily when they park in the driveway, this is the family entrance, not, you know, the visitor entrance that they use. And that would be the primary connector point right here to the ADU in the garage. And then go into the courtyard. And then uh um. Mr. Tamkin, I'll sort of allow you to say where you'd like us to walk to next, or what view would be more helpful to look at?
This is all very helpful, thank you, just keep on uh.
So John, maybe.
If you if you walk, if you walk through the courtyard, go to the other side of the uh the addition.
Great. And if you want, we can walk inside as well, if you want to see what things look like inside.
So with the garage there, there's no access to stairs to get to the uh unit above, you have to go upstairs or in the rear, correct?
There there are two connection points, as I was saying, so with it, if you drive into the garage, you can go from the garage directly up through the interior stair. Or you could walk through the courtyard through the interior stair or from the existing house through the office. Across the the walkway. Um that they consider, I think they called it Squire Landing or.
Squire Crossing.
Squire Crossing that will take you from uh Roger's office into the ADU up above.
Is there a means of egress from the garage, uh in the event the garage door is not operating? Is there a side door?
Yes.
In the back.
It's in the back.
Can you show us that?
Yes.
So what I was suggesting is that the breed, the walkway. Out of the door that the family uses, if there was a doorway. Directly into the unit, that's a different story, you get the garage, now you have to go through the courtyard through the back. Um so your 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 day to day access to the unit is through the owner's office. Which seems a little strange to me as well.
Oh, I see what you're saying, yeah, um we could have access. From the garage to the breezeway, we can move that to the other side. That wouldn't be a big change at all. So we can have a a man door going out the front as well, if that's what you're getting to.
Well, if if you're trying to show it's connected.
Yes.
That connects it more, in my opinion.
Yes.
What about the the thing just resonates in my head, uh you you're going through the gentleman's office for the. Family member, what trace through the guy's office to get to their home, sounds. Little strange. Rather than a foyer or something like that.
Yeah, it it's for his son. You know, the the office is basically, I'm not gonna, it's not the formal office i- in the the sense that it's like going through a business office. It's basically a nice connection to the second floor.
Okay, maybe we can go inside and take a look at that.
Okay.
I know Peter wants to take a peek inside anyway.
This is great, nice visual.
Yeah, this is very cool.
It is. If I could play video games, I could control this.
And that's why John is really good at video games and he's really good at controlling this, you don't want me walking you through, everyone will be getting seasick right now.
The plains of Needham look beautiful. So where's that doorway into that? If we could just turn around?
When you walk through the door, if you continue through the other door to your left, so if we walk around one hundred and eighty degrees, that's the that's the door right there. And that's where, these are all the bedrooms are right there, so as you just come in right there.
How do you get downstairs?
If you go to to that right right there, the stairs are right there.
Okay, got it.
Yeah, it's actually built upside, yeah.
Very, very well done design. Let's just go back into the unit one more time. Okay, thank you.
And and just to be sure, we know that if this is not an ADU, we can build an addition by right here. Right, um it was really important for us, um because. We don't try and just work in one town once and try and like just get through the process. Um it was really important that we described what the client's intent was. And to show this is discreet, even though we're not showing a discreet bedroom, we have, we have, it's it's intended to be a dwelling unit. For their son, so it's um. But we also wanted him to feel like it was a cool space and it was like a a loft space where he has a pull down bed. And he doesn't feel like he's just in a in a small little cramped bedroom, so. It's a small apartment.
Where where is the this pull down bed?
Right behind us, right there, there's a Murphy bed right there.
Okay, thank you.
So, uh I I don't know if we, are we going to try to decide this tonight or do you want to continue?
Uh one one last question, I didn't ask it when you were giving the tour, what is the distance between the main main unit and the addition?
Twenty six feet.
Twenty six?
I think so.
Sounds right.
Yeah.
Yeah. So that's the thing, John, with the door in the back of the garage, you're walking like fifty sixty feet. To get from one to the other.
It 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 impacts the connection.
Yeah.
I- it's either going to impact the connection or it's going to impact. The yard, right, and it's going to make that space really unlivable, right? As as we break it up in there to to put, I'll I'll just play devil's advocate, if we put the ADU directly next to the unit. You know, the existing house. We're going to block all the light that's coming into the addition that we just built for their kitchen and dining room, and that will do really bad things to that. We set it up. Specifically to have the best relationship to the yard, so we actually can create some yard space for them. And then. Develop that connection as much as possible, I completely agree with having the door in the front. That makes a lot more sense and we can do that, I don't, that's not a, that's not a big change at all, and I think that just from a functional standpoint. That makes a lot, a ton, a ton of sense, right, so it's like, yeah, hundred percent, that's an easy thing to do, um. But. Um that space is really, even twenty six feet, you know, if the if the yard were bigger, we'd probably try and make it bigger. Right, if we had more room on the setback. Just because having a little bit, twenty six feet isn't a lot of space in between the the two buildings.
Well, again, I I mean, I think it's a very. Very beautifully designed project and I understand all the reasons what you're doing, but I think we have to struggle with the bylaw. Um not whether we like it. And the bylaw says that. The ADU shall be located in the single family detached dwelling. And not in an accessory building. I, as I sat here thinking about it, they didn't say accessory structure. But not in accessory building. Obviously, the planning board who wrote this. Interprets this as being inconsistent with what they had in mind when they approved ADUs. I don't know. Mr. Tamkin, do you want to continue this to consider those cases that I mentioned or? Uh, Mr. Tamkin, do you wanna continue this, to consider those cases that I mentioned, or?
I, I think that's, uh, something that would allow me to reach the same determination that prior boards did, that a structure attached by a breezeway is a single structure. And that may be a way of accommodating the applicant and what the building inspector has suggested. Um, we have to make a determination that this is in compliance with the bylaw, and it's an apartment in a single-family detached dwelling. Uh, that is second self-contained. So I, I think it could help if we could read those three decisions. And maybe take a look at those properties and sort of come back in a month and, and, and determine it, because it's either it fits or it doesn't fit. You've done a great job, and I understand what the homeowner wants to do. Um, and I'm very supportive of it. And, and, you know, we talked about maybe what we're trying to promote with, um, videos is, need some refinement to allow something like this. But then again, the other thing is it looks like it could be just two structures and it's not contained in one. So, uh, wh- where's the section of the reference that you talked about, John, on not to?
Well, it's, it's unfortunately, I don't know that it's in the printed bylaw. You have to get the ADU.
Yeah, it's three point, three point fifteen point three A.
And a- a- and then there's also other language.
Right.
And so it's in, in not in an accessory building. So the question is, this accessory or is this not accessory? So, did the breezeway connect it? You know, you're smart architects, you know what you're doing here. Um.
Well, we, we believed in working with, you know, both Dave and Daphne, that we were making a connection to be one uniform structure, right? That was our intent. So it wasn't, it, it wasn't like we were just trying to put a breezeway in there, and I mean.
No, 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 I, I, I'm not suggesting.
Full disclosure, the breezeway is like in a very expensive connection as we're getting through this.
It's an incredibly elaborate, beautiful breezeway.
Yeah, you know, John, I, I mean, also in three fifteen A, uh, point two A, there, there's a sentence, the, the, the ADU shall be subordinate in size to the principal dwelling unit, which we've looked at before, and shall be constructed to maintain the appearance and essential character of the single-family dwelling. You know, I, 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 I agree with you. I'd like to see those other decisions, because I don't recall them off the top of my head, but I, I, I still continue. And, and again, I wanna also echo, this is a beautifully designed project. I, I just still not sure that it fits in the intent of the ADU language, but I'd like to see the other decisions.
Okay, why don't we, why don't we run through? Do I have my, my checklist? But I'd like to just run through to make sure there are no other issues. Um, this is the only one. Uh, the ADU must be subordinate in size to the principal dwelling. And I think it is, it's seven hundred fifty square feet compared to a very large building. It, it must have self-contained living, sleeping, cooking, and eating space, which it does. Um, it has to maintain the appearance and essential characteristics of a single-family house, which I think is up in the air. One unit will be owner-occupied, which I take it the house will be and the sun will be, the other has to be occupied by a member of the family, which it will be. Um, total occupancy can't exceed five people, which it won't. Size has to be under eight hundred fifty feet, which it is. It must be attached to the principal dwelling. There has to be a parking space for the ADU and for the principal dwelling. Could, could the architects address the parking? I, I take it that there's plenty of space. There's two in the garage, and then I guess there's a driveway. So I guess.
Yeah.
Own question.
You did.
There, there has to be adequate sewage and drainage. Is this connected to the town sewer?
Yes.
There have to be two entrances, and I guess we do, one along the breezeway and one through the garage. There has to be an interior doorway between the units. That I, I think is also a problem here. Um, that's, that's fine notes, but I was gonna try to look to see back to the bylaw. Supposed to be, you know, that, that implies that it's supposed to be in one building.
Three fifty, three G, Mr. Chair.
Yes, right. All stairways have to be enclosed, which is, that it is. And, um, the special permit does not transfer with ownership of the property, it has to be renewed. So, um, I, I don't think there are any other issues. I mean, it's, it's whether it has to be in the main building and whether, um, we have an interior door, and whether this still looks like a single-family home after it's done, I think are the issues.
Well, looking at those decisions, it's only gonna tell us whether it's one structure. Uh, wh- whether we're comfortable that, uh,
I, I mean, I mean, those, those structures aren't gonna discuss it quite in those terms. But when something was attached, we came to the conclusion it had to comply with the side setback requirements for a principal dwelling as opposed to the five-foot requirement for an accessory structure. That's, that's what those other decisions do.
John, if I understand correctly, so th- those other decisions are pointing toward essentially a form of combining accessory to a, 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 a building requires it be treated as one. Similarly here, as they've connected the, the, the detached to the, the primary should be treated as one. It, it, that seems to be the, the take from those cases?
Yeah, well, I guess, I mean, I think that's the building inspector's view.
Uh, well, you know, I, I, I guess that, that therefore that, that, that allows us to proceed and find compliance. I think it's unanimous. This is a wonderful design. It's taking advantage of the sun, allowing it through, um, allowing the courtyard to be used, uh, you know, a very thoughtful design here. That, to me, that, that gives me comfort that this, this is, this is passable, this is doable.
Mr. Tamkin, do I take it you feel you still would like to continue and think about?
Well, we, or we could just vote on it tonight. I mean, I, I don't think I'm there, because you're, you're basically saying that the breezeway is the door. Or, and, and I'm not so sure I buy that.
Right.
Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair.
Yes.
In the prior cases, were the structures pre-existing or were they being constructed? I know in the Soper case, it already existed, if I'm not mistaken, correct?
No, they were gonna build a new garage.
They were gonna build a new garage as well?
Yeah, they're building a new garage connected by a breezeway.
Got it.
And we, that made it all part of the house and it had to comply with the side setback requirement.
Okay, what about the others that you remember?
If, if they took the breezeway away and separated it by ten feet from the house, then it could be an accessory dwelling. It would have to be only five. And they didn't wanna make that change.
Got it.
We denied their permit that's on appeal. Um, well, Mr. Tamkin, you wanna move to continue this then?
Well, I, yeah, I'm not so sure continuing it to take a look at these cases to determine that it's one structure resolves the other two components of the appearance and the interior door. Um, and you have a bylaw that says it has to be contained in a single-family detached dwelling and not an accessory building. So we look at it, it looks like an accessory building, and now it's attached by a breezeway. Okay, so past precedent maybe states that if it's attached, it's one structure. But why did they write a bylaw particularly this way, if that's our past precedent? And then where's the interior doorway? Then you have to say a breezeway is an interior doorway. I don't think you meet that. I mean, I, I could be convinced you are, but, uh, uh, someone has to give me something more than that. Um, where are breezeways treated as doorways? Or how, how do you have this twenty-six foot span in its doorway? Um, the, I don't wanna get silly, but a, a, a rope bridge or a, a, you know, it's, it's, it's not connected. Or it is one, a- and I'm not sure I'm there. I don't know if the decision's, so maybe we just wanna take a vote on it. And, and I'd like to hear, I heard Howard, and John, what do you think? I mean, I'm very supportive of providing this for our citizens. Um, but we have a bylaw that maybe is, needs some, some work.
John, if I, if I pay, an interior door shall be provided between each living unit as a means of access for purposes of emergency response. So, you know, my reading of that intent for the interior door is for caregivers, elderly, I think that the intent, again, I wasn't there, and I'm the junior guy here, but from what I can see, I don't think the interior door is like a, a fatal flaw here. I think it's more of a convenience measure in the bylaw.
Good. I think you're right.
Sorry to cut you off, Mr. Chair.
Done?
It's a good point.
So, um, John, do, do you wanna put this to a vote? Well, we oughta go on and see if there are any members of the public who wanna be heard on this.
There are no hands raised among the attendees.
Okay.
Let me say one last thing. I think I'm, 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 I'm inclined to give great deference to the building commissioner, who has analyzed this project, and he's in charge to enforcing this bylaw. Um, that said, we have one decision to make, and really, is it, is it a single structure? And I think they've done a magnificent job of trying to. And so I think we, we voted based upon that. I, I don't think the precedent of these other cases are, are gonna give much. Let, let's take it for granted that we have three cases that we know about, where a accessory structure was attached of a much shorter distance, and it was treated as a single structure. So if you went a hundred feet, would it be one single structure? Say probably not. So what's, what's the breakdown? So I'm willing to vote on it, or we continue it, and we can look at these cases, and we can consider it a little bit more.
Okay, if you're ready to vote on it.
Well, actually, can I, can I just raise something? In looking at the agenda, the, 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 the language that's been used, it's actually a little troubling. I- i- it's, it says essentially that it's a special permit to build an ADU. And so to demolish an existing garage in construction of a new two-story detached garage with an ADU. It seems like that, that's inconsistent with what the, what, what we're saying here is that this is actually a, attached.
Well, Daphne makes up the, the thing that goes in the agenda and in the newspaper. So I don't think, I think that should be binding in our decision.
Let's just make a decision to vote it, vote on it now, or continue.
If you'd like to vote on it, make a motion.
Anybody else? I'll make a motion to, uh, close the meeting and vote on the, uh, application.
Okay, well, no, just make a motion to approve.
Uh, I can't make that motion. I'll, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion to approve, uh, uh, approve the applicant's, uh, I believe, the application, excuse me. Motion to approve a special permit under one four three, three fifteen, four two one, uh, to demolish an existing garage in construction of a new two-story garage with an ADU on the second floor with an open breezeway connecting the principal unit and ADU, um, as shown on the plans and renderings, uh, and video presentation filed with the application at eighty-four Fair Oaks Park in the single-resident SRB district, with all normal conditions, requirements for an ADU under the bylaw and our prior decisions. That, you wanna add to those, John, anything?
Well, yeah, just, just the one, the applicant. It's been our practice to add a, a provision um, that will read pretty much as follows. Upon written request of the building commissioner, the owner will provide evidence that the ADU and principal dwelling are being occupied in accordance with the bylaw. In the event the owner fails to provide such evidence to the building commissioner, within thirty days of a written request, the building commissioner may revoke the special permit for the ADU. Any such revocation may be appealed to the ZBA in accordance with the procedures for the appeal of other decisions of the building commissioner. So we would intend to add that in our decision.
And, and wanna, wanna add one other thing, and we should hand out that additional things the next time person's making a motion and maybe you, so we all have it. Um, uh, I would also, uh, the applicant, uh, architects were, uh, supportive of relocating the door to the garage to the front of the structure, so it is connected logically to the walkway. Correct? So the applicant will make that change and submit plans showing that, that modification. Uh, so that would be my motion.
I second that motion.
Okay, uh, is there any further discussion, or do you wanna proceed to a vote?
I have nothing else to comment on.
Okay, why don't we take a vote? All in favor?
Yes, in favor.
I'm in favor.
I'm in favor. Congratulations.
All right, it's approved.
Thank you for a thoughtful presentation and my fellow board members for, uh, an analysis of, uh, a bylaw that probably needs a little work. And without the historical background of, of our chairman, uh, we wouldn't have had those three cases pop up, uh, where we have done something similar in the past, and with the building inspectors supportive of it, and, uh, it's a wonderful project, and hopefully the family can be very pleased.
Yeah, well, thank you.
And that's, it's basically, I'm supporting the building commissioner. I think he's the one who has to interpret this, and, um, you know, whatever the planning board may have intended, they did do a good job of expressing it, and I'm supportive of what the building commissioner has.
Yeah, and I also just wanna add how thankful we are, and I, and we don't say this lightly. It, like I said, we work in a lot of different towns. This process was, I feel, was very fair. And the availability that Daphne and Dave made to us during this process was amazing. This wasn't just a fifteen-minute-long meeting. These were hour-long meetings that we sat down and went through things and tried to be as careful and, and thoughtful as possible with this. So thank you very much for that.
Nice.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulate the homeowners.
All right, so we're gonna, uh, move the third and final case, one fifty Gold Street. Forward and fine lines of Needham Inc., applicant applied to the Board of Appeals seeking relief from following special permit amendment under section three point two point one for retail establishment serving the general public containing five thousand seven hundred fifty or more gross square feet of floor area. B, a special permit pursuant to section three point two point one for a lawful purpose or special use not inaugurated elsewhere in the zoning bylaw. And C, a special permit pursuant to section three point two point one for more than one non-residential use on a lot. D, a special permit pursuant to five point one point one point five, five point one point two, five point one point three for waivers restricted appearance with parking and parking plan and design requirements in any other applicable section of the bylaw. This application is in connection with the applicant's planned use of one half of the building for its logistics and retail distribution and planning facility. On this, I know we have Mr. Jenta, and we're all somewhat familiar with the building. But, Mr. Jenta?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, George Jenta Jr. appearing on behalf of the applicant. And Daphne, if I could ask you to maybe move over David Gordon and Rob Mueller, who are both in the, uh, the, the, uh, the public section.
Okay, and who's the, Rob Mueller and, oh, Dave? Yes. Oh, that's interesting.
Yeah.
Wonder what?
So while Daphne's doing that, I'll say David Gordon is the manager, uh, the, sort of the real person behind the entity. He's the one sort of, uh, spearheading this, and Rob Mueller. He's the one sort of spearheading this and Rob Mueller, uh, some of you are, should be familiar with. Is been with Baker's for a long time and is continuing on at Baker's after the transfer of the business. All right, so, um, so, so let me start off with some background here. So we're talking about the property at 150 Gould Street. Um, it is parcel 10 on map 79 in the industrial one zoning district. Uh, a, a sub, a sub-industrial zoning district. Um, it's a property that has an existing one-story building that was built in 1969. It is currently occupied, uh. From zoning perspective entirely by Baker's Best. Uh, and it's got a little bit of history and I'll sort of try and go through it quite quickly. Uh, back in 2003, uh, the building became vacant. Before that, it was used for office purposes. Uh, and in 2003, United Refrigeration, which, which was an HVAC supply company. Came before the board and got special permits for retail more than 5,750 square feet. Uh, more than one non-residential use and, uh, parking waivers to go in and occupy one half of the building. United's, uh, use was basically they had a warehouse area in the back. They would get calls for parts and they had delivery trucks that would then take the parts and deliver them to job sites. They also had an accessory retail area where people would come in, primarily workmen would come in and purchase parts at the counter. Uh, but that was a smaller accessory thing and their primary thing was the warehouse part. Uh, then in, uh, 2005, the adjacent space which had remained vacant was occupied by Exhibit Source. Which was a, uh, company that handled, uh, different presentations and things like that, uh, basically an office use. Uh, they were only in briefly. That was just a short-term thing for them. And in 2006, Baker's Best came in and this is, I think, most of the members of the board. Uh, well, maybe not most, but some of the members of the board were on the, on, at that point. And Baker's Best, uh, this was when they had moved over from their location in Newton. They were in Newton Highlands for many years and they set up their facility here at 150 Gould Street. As a commercial catering and commissary, uh, to basically produce their food and, uh, which they then delivered out, uh, to customers. Uh, in 2000, from 2006 through 2019. Baker's continued to, to operate in one half of the space, one half of the building and they did quite well. Their business grew. And United Refrigeration then left. And Baker's found that it could use some additional space because of the, the growth in its business. The number of employees it had, basically everybody was kind of bumping elbows inside their space. So they just needed some more room. So they came before the board in 2019 and amended the permit to essentially take over the entire building. Uh, no change to the operation was proposed, but it was to gain, as I said, to gain some space. Operating space, warehouse space, and a large employee break room, uh, an additional office space, which at the time. Baker's had already been subletting from United Refrigeration because they were running out of room in their, in their, uh, half, the other half of the building. Then unfortunately COVID hit and so Baker's never, never really took over in full the entire building. Uh, as, as the boards aware, COVID did a number on Baker's bu- business, dropping it down by as much as 80%. So Baker's ended up doing a takeout, uh, under the, the, under the program that was initiated by the board, the select board. And then because they wanted to keep that going, looking at the, the likelihood that the business wouldn't pick up for a significant amount of time. They came before the board in 2020 and received a special permit for takeout. Prior to that, they did not do any takeout. All the, all their product that they, that they essentially manufactured was delivered. Uh, nobody came into the, the site. When the board approved the takeout in 2020, it imposed a two-year limitation on the permit and then. Uh, last month, we came back in to extend that, uh, and the board granted an extension for 18 months. So at least for the next 18 months, the takeout, uh, provision is still in place. So that's sort of a little bit of background on the building and the property and one thing to mention. So when, when this application was filed and during the, the previous hearings. Uh, you know, there have been conversations or, or comments made with respect to Gordon's intending to buy the building. Well, as of, uh, the end of September, Gordon's was successful in acquiring the building. So right now. Gordon's essentially owns the property. It's held under a, a different entity, but it's the same real parties and interest. Uh, so they control, uh, the property and that's important because when we, as we get down the road, the analysis. You know, they control the parking, uh, and the overall use of the property. So now, in 2019, uh, you know, Baker's was supposed to take over the building. The pandemic hit. Their business suffered a catastrophic, uh, collapse essentially in terms of volume. And they started casting around, uh, what were they going to do? Around the same time, Gordon's was, was continuing their efforts that they had already started to come into Needham to open up this distribution facility. And ended up connecting with Baker's and reached an agreement whereby Gordon's was going to sublease. Essentially the former United Refrigeration space. So the one half of the building that Baker's was going to expand into, Gordon's was going to sublease. They struck that deal. Gordon's went to the select board seeking a liquor permit. Because, uh, as a part of this, it's the sale of liquor. So you need a liquor permit with that. And, uh, in May of 2021, that permit was granted. Now, as I said, originally it was a sublease, but as. The, as things progressed, as Baker's business, uh, sort of limped along, uh, as Gordon's viewpoint on the business progressed. Everything kind of changed and instead of it just being Gordon's subleasing the former United Refrigeration space. It became Gordon's acquiring the property and Gordon's acquiring Baker's business. So as I indicated, Gordon's now owns the, the property and there's, and in the next 30 to 60 days, they are anticipating closing on Baker's business. So at the end of everything, uh, assuming all goes well this evening, it will be basically Gordon's owning the entire property and or owning. Both businesses in the building, uh, which again, we get to the analysis, you'll, you know, I'll explain that that's a good thing. Both for Gordon's and for the town. Now Gordon's, uh, for those of you that are not familiar with Gordon's, it is a full-service, uh, liquor store that was founded, uh, in Waltham. Um, back in, uh, 1934, I believe it was. They have therefore a long history in retail, a long history in the state. Uh, they have, they started with one location in Waltham. They, they later opened a second location in Waltham. A location in Watertown and a location in Newton. So right now they operate four retail locations. They also do business online, uh, as a lot of liquor stores have shifted as a result of COVID. Uh, and being a pioneering business, uh, they, they see this as a sort of a way forward. I say being a pioneering business because, uh, back in the day. They were actually started one of the first newsletters, uh, with respect to fine wine. So they've always been a bit of a forward-looking company and that continues with this, uh, application, this concept. This, as indicated, will be a logistics and retail distribution and planning facility. What the heck is that? Uh, half of it is, uh, pretty straightforward. The, uh, the retail distribution. Basically there is 7,500 square feet of warehouse space in the back of this section of the building. That will be storage for product. Orders will come in, you know, via internet or phone. And then they will be packaged up and then they will be shipped out with, uh, the delivery vans and they will get delivered to customers. So one thing with this, I want to make it abundantly clear. This will not be a standard liquor store. This will not be a retail location where people will be coming in and buying. Uh, wine or spirits or beer. This is, uh, completely different. So, so distribution warehouse and back gets packaged up, the vans leave. Vans will be leaving generally around 9:30 in the morning. Six days a week. They'll come back around three o'clock in the afternoon. They'll basically be gone, loaded up. You know, the, the deliveries will be planned so they don't have to keep coming back and forth. So it's basically the vans are out for the day. Now the rest of it, the, the planning facility. As a part of their service, uh, Gordon's works with people to curate menu, beverage menus for different events. Big dinners, corporate events, educational events. And as a part of that, they have to do, they have to have discussions with people as to what would be appropriate selections. Based on what food's being served or what the event is. And so this is where the planning facility comes into place. So this is primarily the front half, well, not front half, front roughly quarter of the space. Consists of roughly, uh, just under 3,000 square feet of area. And it is divided into several offices. A storage area kind of smack in the middle and a small retail area of 624 square feet right in the front. Now what will happen is people will, uh, some people will maybe have consultations via the phone, maybe via Zoom, Skype. Uh, whatever, uh, but some people will come in in person and they will have consultations in person. In addition, some customers will come in and do tastings and purchase small amounts. To try at home based on the recommendations of Gordon's staff. That's what the 624 square feet is for. It will be customers coming in by appointment only to do tastings and to discuss options with respect to beverage selection. Again, nothing at all like a regular, uh, retail location. Uh, and the storage area will supplement both the front of house as well as the, the warehouse space in back. Hours of operation generally will be 9:00 AM.
So I don't forget, real quick, interrupt you for a minute. What's the retail for?
So the retail is for, for, let's say somebody's doing a dinner, right? And, uh, and they are trying to decide on what wines they want to have with the dinner. They can come in, they can taste, they can buy bottles of wine. To then either do some tasting in the shop or buy the bottles and then take them home and taste. And then evaluate which one they want to actually go with. So although it's very small amount of sales, it's still technically retail. And so that portion is a retail area. If you looked at the, the floor plan, the proposed floor plan, it's a very small space. It's only 624 square feet.
So George, the, uh, the, I guess the so-called retail location, the retail aspect use is confined only to the 624 square feet?
Yes, correct. Right. And again, so this is, we're talking about only people coming in by appointment. So they're coming in by appointment to have a consultation and then. So they come in, they do the consultation and a Gordon's staff member recommends, well, we think, you know, you probably should go with one of these six wines. Well, maybe they buy two or three or maybe all six to go home and try. And that's, that's basically what the retail component is for. It's not for the general public to come in. Again, no, it's not open sort of general. You have to have an appointment to come in. So it's not like a regular story that way.
Yeah, but George, if, if we want to make an appointment to sample wines, can we do that?
Just a, just a, sort of just to generally sample the wines?
Sure.
I, I don't believe so. I'll let.
In a private room, in other words, how, how do you make an appointment? I mean, to sample wines in that small room?
Anybody can make an appointment to come in and meet with a staff member and taste wine and buy wine.
George, can I, can I ask a question? Because I've, I've, I've been a little confused about this. One of the permits you're looking for is the permit. Uh, for retail establishment serving the general public containing 5750 or more gross square feet of floor area, which is an awful lot more than 624.
Yes, it is. And this is, uh, so because Gordon's is occupying the entire half of the building. Technically they're occupying 10,000 plus square feet. So even though they're only using 624 square feet for retail. It's, they fall under that special permit category. In exactly the same way that United Refrigeration had to get that same permit, even though their retail area. Was limited to, I think it was 2,500 square feet, give or take. Uh, it's the same kind of a thing because they're occupying the whole thing. You then need that special permit.
Okay, but, but limited to 624 square feet in any decision?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt.
Yeah.
I'm not. It was important.
All right, so, uh, so going back to the hours of operation are generally going to be 9:00 AM, uh, to 6:00 PM. Monday to Saturday. Obviously, uh, the 6:00 PM might, you know, that might push a little bit later, but tho- those are the, the general hours. Um, and there will be between four to six employees maximum on site. Uh, at any given time, uh, during the, the day, you know, obviously the delivery drivers will come in on top of that. You know, either carpool or park and then take the vans out and then take the vans back. So there's, so there's sort of four, when we get to parking, there's four spots that go with that. The expectation is that there will be, uh, probably between, uh, four to six maybe customers max at any given time. So again, this is not a, this is a small-scale kind of boutique type of a thing. This is not a. Get as many people in, sell as much product and get them out. Basically that aspect of the business is you do it via phone or internet and then it gets delivered right to your door. So the volume is sort of handled differently. This is more the, the customer-focused, uh, consultation service. Uh, all right, so, um. So now let's talk about parking because this is, this is really kind of the, the biggest concern, I think, that has come up on this property over the years. And with that, you know, a little background. Back in, uh, 2003, when United Refrigeration went in, there, we did a parking calculation. And based on the prior use of the property as office, the property required 69 parking spaces. When Baker's Best went in the first time, uh, there was a determination, um, made. That, that it was, you know, basically that it was, I think, 60 parking spaces were required. Uh, or then in 2019, it was, it was up to possibly up to 71. That were required, but 60 was more than adequate based on Baker's own knowledge of their business. And I'm going to sort of jump ahead and then come back. In this case, when you run the calculations. You come up with a maximum parking demand of 57 spaces. Uh, because of the changes to Baker's business and the, and the use of the Gordon's portion of the building. There are currently 33 parking spaces on site. Baker's has an additional 29 spaces that they are required to keep as a part of their permit. So that's a total of 62 parking spaces. So there is actually, you know, uh, five spaces more available than required when you're in the calculations. But.
For a second regarding the 29 lease spaces, uh, that area has become very, um. Very active, I guess, has been a new developer's taken over quite a few of the buildings and looks like they're increasing the intensity, having more people. So tell us a little bit about the 29 lease spaces, uh, that, that, that the applicant has. What's the nature of that arrangement off-site?
Sure. So, so it's, those 29 spaces are at the adjacent property and those are part of a, of a existing lease that continues on. Uh, as I said, as part of the Baker's, it's a, it's a requirement of the Baker's decision. So it's part of, they have to keep that in place. In order to keep operating, but obviously they also need the spaces, uh, in order to, to meet their own needs. Uh, but it's on the, it's the property next door to the left. I believe it's.
Yes, I'm, I'm just wondering, is it a written lease? Is it a tenancy at will?
Oh, yes, yes. No, it's, it's, it's a, it's a written lease. It's a written lease at term. Uh, and in fact, um, Howard, you, I don't know, you probably don't recall, we actually went through some of this in 2019. Um, and, uh, and we discussed the written lease and there was some debate about. Should they provide the written leases or should it just be a condition of the permit? And ultimately the board decided to just make it a condition of the permit. Uh, because there was the possibility that if the business changed. They might have to fluctuate the, you know, they might have to get more spaces, for example, or if. I mean, at that point, point in 2019, Baker certainly didn't anticipate the pandemic and they didn't expect. You know, business to go the way it did.
Well, George, I guess what I'm getting at is that, that increased demand in the other spaces with these 29 offsite spaces exist. Seems to me there's going to be pressure to take those spaces back. And I'm just inquiring about the, the type of written lease that exists. You said it's a year, short-term. What, what's the nature? Can you be, elaborate, please?
So, so basically there is a lease for some space in the adjacent building. And with that space, which basically goes unused, is the, is the 29 parking spaces. So it's a, it's a, they are. Under a written lease, so they are locked up. So they have the, they're not, uh, subject to being used by other people.
Because my observation at the site, it, the, the other lots are very busy, that, that looks like it's an office building that people park. And, uh, it seems congested, the, the other space. As is this lot.
I think it would, sorry, I think it would help. Even though the board in 19 may have said, we don't need to look at the lease. I think it would be appropriate to get a redacted copy of the lease. Uh, for what the space relates to and from Howard's concern, the duration of that lease.
Mm-hmm, okay.
Can you tell us, can you tell us how long the lease runs?
I believe it was a, and I'd actually look to Rob Mueller to, to comment on this as well because he's got more working knowledge of it. But I believe it might have been a five-year with a five-year renewal. No, maybe Rob's not on right now.
Looks like he's.
Yeah, George, I believe we submitted, um, the, the lease in the first, uh, application. Am I wrong about that?
Uh.
It was the assignment of the lease from Baker's to, to Gordon's, uh. It was the assignment of the lease from Baker's to to Gordon's uh couple of months ago when we appeared before the board.
Yeah, we didn't, we didn't actually provide it then.
Yeah.
Uh pardon me, George, the the space is approximately forty-five hundred square feet. And the twenty-nine uh spaces, as you stated, accompany uh that lease and are part of that arrangement. And the five and five is what I understand as well, the five with the five-year extension. And that's that's part of the one hundred and forty gold um lease with this forty-five hundred square square feet and twenty-nine spaces uh. In the written lease arrangement.
So you have about six or seven years left?
That that's correct.
And the, refresh my memory, that Baker's decision says. The permit lasts as long as you have that parking or you'll have to get supplemental parking?
It it says that the requirement to maintain twenty-nine offsite spaces.
Okay, so I think it's still prudent to get us a copy of the lease, redact the rent and uh so we can see the term and the the scope of it. What's the forty-five hundred square feet use? Any any purpose?
Uh we've used it for meeting rooms, we've used it for uh storage, we've used it for training and um education. You know, just just uh conferences, um new hire meetings, uh interviews, that sort of thing.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
We threw you off track, George.
Yeah, that's it. All right. So so in discussing the parking. So the current calculation comes up with a maximum of fifty-seven spaces required. That is based, though, uh on two things. It's based number one, on the Baker's side with respect to their. Their current numbers, which are significantly down. Uh they're actually even below what they were when they first opened in two thousand and six. Uh and it also is based on the calculation per the bylaw. For the Gordon's operation. And the reality is that the. Calculation under the bylaw for the Gordon's operation actually comes up with more spaces than there will likely ever be people in the building. So um so so, you know, the fifty-seven required parking spaces. Um as of right now, is probably actually larger than what the actual demand would be. If Baker's business increases, it might be more accurate. But even with that, it's uh, you know, it's probably still a a reasonable number to work with.
And can you uh talk about the timing of what? The to the Baker's employees generally come early and leave early?
Yeah, so so generally, the Baker's employees get there early and they are all pretty, most of them are gone by three o'clock in the afternoon. So so, you know, so during the, I guess, most of the morning. You know, there's there's no real customer uh traffic other than the limited amount of. Pickups that come as a part of Baker's takeout permit. So and the reason why, one of the reasons why Gordon's has decided to do the consultations after three o'clock. Is because it then does not conflict with the main chunk of the Baker's operation. And also doesn't conflict with uh their main part of the delivery aspect. So basically, you know, once you get after three o'clock, there's not much traffic really at the site. And uh so that's the best time to actually have. The 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 general, when the public's coming in, you know, when customers are coming in for consultations, that's going to be the best time for that.
And and did you say that there would be only four delivery trucks?
Yes.
Right, are, so are you gonna have some kind of parking management plan to tell people to park in certain places?
Yeah, so so, you know, the Gordon's business isn't going to add. Uh a lot, at least to begin with, it was not going to really add a lot of parking to it. Uh as I indicated at the outset, Rob Mueller is going to stay on. You know, he has been with Baker's for a while and is going to continue on with Baker's after the, you know, after uh Gordon's acquires it. So he will help oversee, you know, the Baker's for a long time. Has had a quite robust parking management kind of plan and in that they have uh. Basically kept an eye on or been very interactive with their employees to find out who drives, who takes public transportation. Providing incentives for employees to carpool or take public transportation. They run a shuttle to pick employees up. Uh at public transportation uh locations. Um a- and basically try and, you know, do whatever they need to do to manage the parking. And I will say. Since Baker's Best has been in this location in two thousand and six. Uh you know, in two thousand and nineteen, when they came before the board for the expansion. You know, they had at that point, um at any given time, a maximum of like eighty-five people on premise. But in all the years, including, you know, two thousand seventeen, eighteen, nineteen. There has not been, to my knowledge, a single complaint about parking. Uh you know, I know there were, there were a couple of complaints a few years back. With respect to noise from deliveries, you know, early in the morning. But there's never been complaints about parking. And I think that is a testament to. The robust parking plan that Baker's has uh managed over the years and that that parking plan will continue going forward. And added to that, uh another significant thing added to that is Gordon's will be in instituting a work-from-home policy. So you know, right now, Baker's employees do their work on site. Uh but Gordon's will be basically allowing or encouraging employees to work from home offsite. A certain number of days to help manage the parking and al- and also to help manage the flow of people in the building. So there will be a continuation of the of the dynamic robust parking management plan uh going forward. And this is, and this gets back to what I said, it's it's significant that Gordon's. Will own the property and will own both businesses. So it's not uh, it's not like it'll be a situation where you will have. You know, we could have two different businesses kind of operating at odds with each other. Uh they will basically be in a position to manage. Parking and employee load and flow of the two businesses to make it work. And it's in their interest, obviously, to do that because if if it gets jammed up, then it's going to hurt both businesses.
George, can I ask a question about the um? Uh the hours of delivery and how that might work. It sounds like there's four delivery trucks. Of Gordon's that used to ship uh the wine, but how about the delivery? I know the past hours of uh operation in the morning or night. What hours are being proposed for the deliveries to 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 the location?
All right. So so incoming deliveries uh generally would, we, you know, could track them the same as uh as the Baker's. Current permit, which uh the Baker's permit is, deliveries are allowed between seven AM and nine PM. And that would work for Gordon's as well.
Didn't we reduce, didn't we reduce the evening hours in two thousand and nineteen?
Uh not for do- not for deliveries, um but but it was. The trash pickup was reduced. So trash pickup, I think, previously went until seven or nine PM. But trash pickup was reduced it to from seven AM to four PM.
Can you address, um and this is a Gordon's question, um you called it vans. And they're going to be loaded up and they're gone all day. What do those vehicles look like in vans don't. Wouldn't last all day. Trucks might last all day. And I I and and where did the four trucks come from rather than six trucks or ten trucks? Maybe Gordon, uh David, you can address.
So they're they're uh Ford Transit vans, basically. Um and they're loaded up all day. Um they do, they do last all day on a full tank of gas. Um and they'll do anywhere between, you know, uh you know, fifteen to thirty stops throughout, you know, the Metro West area.
And they're just one fill up and they're gone for the day, they don't.
Yeah, we load them up in the morning. It's not like, I mean, the Baker's side of that operations, it'll different because it's food and it has a very specific time it needs to get there. The Gordon's side, you can load them up in the morning, send them out. And uh and they can stay out all day. And it's it's the operation we're currently running in in Wall Fam, it's, we're out of, you know. We're we're out of space and it's terribly inefficient. So uh it's it's not something that's newer necessarily unique. It's, you know, just becoming greatly more efficient. Uh with both, you know, the acquisition of the building and the Baker's business and the and the license.
And uh these vans will park on the property after hours at three.
Right, yeah, and and they park a couple in front of the building, the Baker's vans in in front of the building. There's more than enough parking in the back of the building after hours uh for those vans to to be stored.
George, Mr. Gordon, the acquisition of the building, are there any? I I know I, and I wasn't here in the August meeting, but are there any renderings? Are there any plans to renovate the front? I mean, obviously, right now, the building looks more like a industrial kind of one-story place and if for all the Baker's best. Vans, you don't know what's really behind there. Is it going to look and smell the same or is it going to change?
Um to to be honest, I'm I'm trying to just catch my breath at the moment with all this stuff going on. Personally, aesthetically, I think it does need to be upgraded. It needs paint, the awning needs to be changed. It does need some, some, the building needs some upgrades uh from an exterior perspective. I think you're right about that. Um frankly, I'm just, I'm not there yet.
I guess my specific question is, is it going to look more like a liquor store than?
No.
It's like now.
No, it will not. No, it 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 will, it will look like exactly how it looks now in terms of uh egress and and going into a consultative sales. Uh office, basically.
Got it.
Uh George, I I wasn't there in August either, but just paging through the decision, there's some. There's a reference that under the license granted to Gordon's, delivery trucks will be restricted to ten AM to two PM. Is is that a term of the liquor license?
All right, George, I'll stop you. Regardless, we can adhere to that. That's fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm 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 not sure, Peter, where that where that came from.
Okay. It it may have been from the um selectman decision.
Yeah.
Yeah, because the the August. If it was in there, it might have been just a general discussion.
Yeah.
Well, I, my understanding was it was in the liquor license granted by.
What I'm wondering, yeah.
Right.
Okay.
All right, if it's a condition, if it is a condition of that, then obviously we have to comply with that.
Okay, okay.
All right, uh if the board doesn't have further questions, we ought to see if there's anyone from the public.
There are no hands raised among the public.
Okay, so um. Discussion among the board, uh I mean, I I understand, I I'm understanding that. The consultation from the public and those retail sales would be only after three o'clock and only by a point. And that we're limiting, the retail would be limited to six hundred and twenty-four square feet.
So what is the hour of operation from three to what? Starts at three, when does it end?
Oh, for the for the consultations, it's roughly three to six. Although, you know, I I wouldn't want a six o'clock hard limit if it's, if anything was going on the decision, I'd want maybe. You know, seven o'clock or something is a hard limit, but generally speaking, it's three to six is the the hours.
Is it Monday through Saturday?
Yes, yes.
Yes.
So so I just want to pop in and say that I'm not going to participate on the vote. Uh I recuse myself from the last one. I thought the transaction had already gone through. So uh I I think Peter or Nick should uh probably vote on this one. Uh it just has no conflict with the Gordon family. It's a prior situation with uh the seller. So I'm not going to participate in this vote.
Okay.
That's a fine time to bring that up. I want to take it more notes.
So Peter and Nick should just step up.
So are there are there further questions or we ready to frame a motion?
The and the the building inspector raised a couple of issues, John, have done over all those?
Yeah, I'm sorry. I should go through the comments we have. That is neglected to do. The planning, the planning board. Says that we should uh. Make big, make sure that the relevant liquor license regulations with the selectmen have been met. Um don't find that very illuminating. Uh, you know, because obviously they have to have a liquor license to do the operations.
Actually, John, I'm just wondering uh that, does the, this is a somewhat of a novel approach, this consultative um. Wine sharing and slipping and so on. Is that part contemplated in the liquor license, George?
Ye- yes.
So so the liquor license is not for, what can you just explain a little bit more about the selectmen's grant of the license? What did they grant?
So so I can't comment directly on that because I didn't handle that aspect. However. The uh application, basically, the uh the floor plans and the application packet to the selectmen, what they voted on. Was basically the same packet that you have, you know, with respect to uh a business that is going to be a a warehouse. Uh distribution, you know, sort of the largest part of the footprint. Uh and then a small retail spot in the front uh with the, for the consultation area.
Is that permit, I assume renewed every year? What's the nature of that liquor permit?
Yes, liquor licenses are renewed uh on an annual basis through the selectmen. The the process is you have to get approval from the select, the select board first. It then gets sent to the out, the ABCC, the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission. They review it, they have to green light it, and then it goes back to the select board. Then the select board actually issues the license. And then once issued, it gets renewed every year thereafter.
And do they have hours of operation i- in the license?
I don't believe they have hours of operation in the license. There are a set of general regulations that have sort of outside hours of operation. But I believe that's more expansive than uh what we're actually talking about with respect to this permit.
But that three to seven would would certainly work within the the license permit, as far as you know?
Yes.
Thank you, George.
All right, so the the building inspector made a relatively long comment, much of which we've uh addressed. Says the proposal does not include any tasting events. Or the use of any other space in the building for that purpose. The application does not address hours of operations, but we have. Or how shipping and receiving a product will be managed. Um I'd like to know the size of the commercial vehicles used. The operations and how they maneuver through the parking lot to the loading dock area. In the past, there have been complaints about late-night deliveries. If the board grants the permit, have agreed hours of operations, including shipping and receiving, is part of the decision. Please also include the six hundred and twenty-four spe- space of retail space. Is a maximum limit, so it can be enforced if required in the future. This should also include trash removal facility, which has been a complaint in the past. But generally, I do not have any issues with the concept. But the parking lot should be clearly striped for vehicles and loading areas. For all required signage for accessible parking. Can we address that last point? It appears that there's no identified handicap parking or is?
There is.
Yeah, there there is a designated handicap spot, the I'm uh I. I didn't specifically look at that space to see how well the paint is now. But uh so it may be that it needs a fresh, you know, a touch-up or a fresh coat of paint on the lines and the in the designation. But there is a designated handicap spot for the building.
There are two, George.
I I I think that we've addressed. You know, our decision, the things the building inspector wants handled.
So, John, is is this an amendment, a further amendment to to? The existing permits or is this a a new standalone permit?
I I I think it's an amendment, but. Uh 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 maybe proposed, uh in two thousand and nineteen, we said. Because it was giving confusion that this supersedes all the prior permits. And I guess in my mind, I think it would make sense. To uh, well, it's technically an amendment to kind of do a restated complete format, so you can look to the. Two thousand and twenty-two permit and know what you're dealing with.
Well, the o- only because there's a lot of stuff in the in the twenty nineteen permit. You know, about, you know, dumpsters, hours and and stuff like that, that if we're going to do a new standalone. You know, about, you know, dumpsters, hours and, and stuff like that, that if we're gonna do a new standalone, we need to make sure we carry that stuff forward.
Yes, that's what I, at least that's my suggestion, but I think just carry that forward, but write a new permit that supersedes what was there before.
And we'll have the, the twenty nineteen and twenty twenty-two continue to apply to the Baker's side of the operation?
Yeah. Yes. Trying, trying to see, do we have any other comments on this? My papers have gotten shuffled here. Daphne, do you know, do we have comments from the police? Public Works?
I'm sorry.
My papers have gotten shuffled, do we have comments on the Gordon Brothers' application from?
Public Works had no comments, the police's comment was, the only concern the police would have would be regarding operations and impact on the neighbors. We have had issues in the past with noise early in the morning and later in the evening, I would be interested in understanding hours of operations, which I, I think we've addressed.
And then, of course, the standard health department. No comments from the engineering.
No comment from engineering. Alright, and we have no one from the public who wants to be heard, so I think we're ready to try to frame a motion, which we can try to do jointly, but maybe Peter, I'll designate you to be the other voting member on this. Oh, you got time now.
Time on your hands. John, if I can start to frame the, 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 the motion, and I'm sure there'll be a lot of input from everybody.
Go ahead.
Move that the applicant's request, A, for a special permit amendment under section three, two, one, for a retail establishment serving the general public and containing fifty-sevens, fifty square feet, more or less, a floor area. B, special permit pursuant to three point two one for lawful purpose or special use, not enumerated elsewhere in the zoning bylaw. Which I believe was, was discussed, sort of this space, consultative space, I think, is somewhat of a, a, other, other permit. Other use permitted under the use code with the special permit. C, a special permit pursuant to three, two, one, for more than one non-residential use on a lot. D, a special permit pursuant to five, one, one, five, five, one, two, and five, one, three for waivers of strict adherence to the parking numbers and parking plan and design requirements. Okay, so I think that's, that, that's the, the motion, now let's talk about some of the conditions. One, that the the space used for consultative and meetings in the amount of six twenty-four square feet be limited only to that space. Hours of operation, that's six twenty-four square feet of Monday through Saturday, three PM to seven PM. That the use be by appointment only. Next is that the, the hours of delivery to the building be from seven AM to nine PM. That trash pickup be from seven AM to four PM. That the applicant produce a written signed copy of the lease for the twenty-nine parking spaces on an adjacent facility. That that the parking lot be restripped to, to clearly show the parking for the vehicles and parking and loading zone areas. Those are the quick notes that I have, I'm not sure, do other people have additional caveats? That we want to incorporate by reference, the conditions from the two thousand and nineteen and, and later decisions as well?
One, another condition that I'd like to put in is, if, if it's not objectionable is that the delivery trucks will be parked behind the building at night.
Yeah, I don't, I don't see any issue with that, David, you agree with that?
That's no problem.
Is this all the part, are, are these all the delivery trucks, Baker's Best and Gordon's?
No, Baker's has their own four Gordon's.
I think there are only seven spaces behind, so.
Yeah.
So. So they'll be parked behind the building to the extent their space.
Yeah, I believe in, Rob can jump in here, with, in terms of Baker's. I, I don't know if it was the board or the, whatever the circumstances were, that wanted one of the trucks parked either in front of a loading dock or by the dumpsters at some point in time in front of the building.
Yes, no, absolutely, that's, that's a great point, Dave. On our last special permit meeting in two thousand and nineteen, as we reassess the mixed commercial and, and residential area and the sensitivity for deliveries with some of our vendors like Coca-Cola having regular rotation and drivers and concern that perhaps we wouldn't, the, the vendors would not be abiding by the hours that we had mandated and communicated clearly with our, our sales associates. We were asked to block the loading dock delivery area each evening kind of on a forty-five degree angle with one of our, our vehicles. And the same thing was happening with our, our dumpsters to avoid any, you know, effort to make a, a pre-authorized delivery or pickup. And then we put locks and so forth on the dumpsters to also address that. So is that something that you, you know, probably, would you like us to maintain, continue to maintain that parking kind of blocking tactic? Or just have all the vehicles in the back?
No, yes, so why don't, so why don't we just say the Gordon Brother trucks are open?
That's fine.
Yeah, I, I, I don't think we require that, but that was something that Baker's Best was doing, and it seemed very practical and useful.
It's, it's definitely worked, and I've been very, very well received by neighbors, I think, too.
Alright, so there any other conditions anyone can think of we need to put on?
Howard, the, the only thing I, I would say is I think the, the incoming delivery hours are, are ten AM to two PM rather than the, whatever it was in the, the Baker's thing.
So, so it was, the delivery was seven AM to nine PM, and you're saying it should be what, Peter?
For this, it would be ten AM to two PM.
Let's stop a minute, does that work for Baker's Best? I mean, that's apparently a requirement for liquor deliveries. But I'm not, I'm not sure that works for.
It, it does, it does work for both sides to actually be, because of the ability, kind of the forced ability now to, to stagger deliveries throughout the morning, but in terms of the liquor side, we're able to schedule our vendors to, to come to deliver, basically, whenever we'd, we'd like. So after ten AM is, is probably a, a better, a better thing.
If, if, if I, if I may, I, I, from, just from my perspective, from a zoning perspective, I would prefer to see you leave the Baker's at, at seven to, seven to nine to provide flexibility. And then if you're gonna condition, just do, just condition, you know, just limit the, the Gordon's side. Because then too, if it, otherwise, you've got all the deliveries getting forced to that window, the incoming deliveries. And I can see that that might down the road cause a conflict or cause an issue. And so I think on one or the other, you, you need to have a little more flexibility, and where Baker's has had basically seven AM to nine PM is their delivery window for several years. I, I think, you know, leave that in place and then limit the Gordon's to the, to the ten to two.
Yeah, frankly, I, I don't know why we're messing with Baker's in this decision. You know, the, the, the twenty nineteen decision for Baker's works fine. And they're not an applicant here, the, their business isn't really the subject of the hearing.
Alright, so we'll just, we'll just do this as an amendment.
Yeah. I, I would just do this for Gordon's. It's the motion, I don't have any other conditions that.
Okay, so, so we, we have a motion made, and you seconded, Peter?
I do.
Okay, all in favor? Alright. Welcome.
Thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, guys.
Yep, congratulations.
Good luck, it's an interesting and vicious plan.
Thank you, Art.
Alright, in, in, in terms of writing, I've done the other Baker's Best one, so I'm willing to do that, and Howard, do you do the third car garage?
I'll be happy to do that, thank you.
And then the other, and let me see, John, would you do the approval of the ADU?
I'll give it my best, although I am the third car garage guy, you know that.
We wanna give you experience in other forums as well, John.
I wanna eliminate my expertise.
You seem to have some strong opinions about this ADU, so I'm looking forward to reading that decision.
Yeah, it's a toughie.
Alright.
Alright, this is, this is a lot of fun, good night, good night, all.
Well, we'll have two, I believe we have two ADUs for next month.
I'll be taking, I'll be taking that month off, Howard.
Are there any breezeways, are there any breezeways, Daphne, for next month?
I don't know, I have not seen the plans for these, so.
To modify this ADL, ADL, ADU law.
Jonathan, I think we're together, we're out on the seventeenth, right? Getting donuts?
We're still waiting for those donuts.
Yeah, one of these days when we're in person.
Buy any time with that bag of dunks, alright.
This was a nice brief you wrote.
Congratulations, Peter.
Thank you, John.
Peter, I'm gonna call you about retirement one day. But I guess I won't be calling at the office.
I was gonna say, I'll be too busy, yeah.
Me too, Peter, I'm calling you about retirement.
Alright, good night, everybody.